The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Second motion by Radig, any discussion? At this time, we have Supervisor Taylor on the phone and Supervisor Bittenger is not on the phone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes four zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the June 18th meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from Board Administration is approval of resolution for a tax suspension for initial CV. And four B is approval of lifting tax suspensions for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Item five from Woodbury Soil and Water Conservation District is approval of 2080 agreement between Woodbury County, Iowa and the Woodbury Soil and Water Conservation District for funding and management of a watershed inspection and maintenance program in Woodbury County, Iowa. And item six from Secondary Roads is approval of utility permit for placement of new electric line in county right-of-way for Mid-American Energy. I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Radig. Any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Passes four zero. Item seven from Secondary Roads includes A and B for action. A is to authorize the chairman to sign letter to U.S. Senators Grassley and Ernst seeking support for I-29 South Bridge Interchange Project. Is someone from the engineer's office with that letter? County Engineer Mark Nera is out of town, I believe, at a conference and Kyle with the office is assisting in emergency response. So we have with us...
I'm Jacob Gilrith with Secondary Roads. Yeah, this letters for the interchange as previously stated, we believe it would be beneficial to send this to the senators so then they come down and look at the site and what we plan on doing and meet the industries around and get a feel for what we want and hopefully they'll support us when it comes time for choosing who receives the grant.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Nelson. Be sure and get this off to the staff members at those respective U.S. Senators' offices. Appreciate County Engineer Mark Nera for bringing this forward and the initiative. Hopefully it does help. Hearing no other discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes four zero. And I will sign these right now. Item seven B is approval of a contract for gravel production at the Little Sioux Gravel Pit with bedrock for $406,250.
I'll move it quickly.
Second motion by Radig.
I just say that with that bridge from North Sioux that Everest Line is using, we're lucky to have our own production.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like you killed a cat there on the phone. But we got the aye.
All is well.
All right. Passes four zero. There you go. All right, moving on to item eight from Board Administration, starting with A for action. This is approval of resolution to consider and approve a 2080 agreement between Woodbury County, Iowa and the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority granting the authority of forgivable loan for the payment of certain costs and expenses related to the Law Enforcement Center. Item eight B is related. Mr. Nelson, did the authority pass this at its meeting earlier today?
We did, three zero.
Was there any discussion that would be relevant to the board supervisors?
I was the only one that had discussion. The comments that I made were that we would never even be discussing a 2080 for a loan to the authority to cover these types of expenses had the project opened on time and had the actions, inactions of Housman and Tropa, DGA had not caused us this damage this far out and every day that we're not in there, they continue to damage us, which is why we are really forced to try to do this to protect ourselves. So I just, I wanted to reiterate those thoughts on this here, but that's pretty much exactly what I said earlier this afternoon and that was the only discussion.
Okay. Dennis, do you have anything to add on this?
Oh, not really. It's pretty self, it's not part of the resolution, it's going to use the full parameters, also the limited amount, it's also a loan to be repaid back.
And I think that's the important thing is that it's a loan to be pre-repaid back from damages and again, we would not be doing this if we hadn't been damaged.
And to make it abundantly clear, the sort of fees that this can pay for do not include anything like change orders or anything that would be related to that.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
And the authority, obviously authority and the county's councils have worked together on this. We hope to do this once.
Correct.
And not come back to this and have to go through this costly and tedious process again, so we are hopeful that this is helpful to the county's claim, which is the major concern with this is devoting adequate resources and an adequate timeline to pursue the claims that the county will pursue. Is there any more?
Mr. Chair, if I can comment?
Yes.
So I'm really appreciative of Supervisor Nelson's admonition that this is something that we are being damaged by these entities for. I also think it's important to note that the $400,000 of additional tax money is from unbudgeted reserves and with the LEC Authority being out of money, I had made clear a couple of months ago, I was willing to have our board dedicate additional money to helping support a narrowed request to support litigation expenses. One of the things I think the public doesn't have the benefit of hearing the whole of our discussion due to much of it happening in two different closed sessions and those discussions to me made clear that the project management group, the Baker Group, was funded completely to July 1st and those recorded discussions also made clear and were reiterated that July 29th is the opening date, even with a pending question or two being raised. So that leaves a month of in-construction period funding being required, July 1st to the 29th. So most of our tax paying public would think we need to send another $34,000 approximately for one month. But I think it's also fair to say that this covers project management group fees for four more months from July 1st to November 1st and those discussions are again, were made clear in our closed session. So I can see funding as reasonable through the month of July and I can even understand doing so for another month past that, given the troublesome nature of the project. But the rejoinder time and again was we need to have the Baker Group available to ask questions or to answer questions rather in the months of September and October and to me, that doesn't seem reasonable as we try to mitigate damages. And so I just think that in full transparency, that we need to make sure that the public understands, yes, this is for approximately six months of Jody McDougall's legal fees, but it also contains four months of project management fees that are at the in-construction rate. And to me, I think we can both make sure that we're well positioned, but going to an hourly rate or month-to-month past August 30th, you know, seems to me like it's also trying to mitigate our damages and we do this with our attorney fees where they have to give us an hourly accounting and because this was again, in closed session, I had asked if that would be made available on a weekly basis and was assured that it would, but I don't see that in this 2080 that binds that to happen and so those are some reasons I have concerns about this.
Mr. Radig, did you, you turned your mic on.
Yeah, I, I just kind of was curious, so what do we think the odds of the loan being paid back in a forgivable? Just remember one at the city, one here at the county and none of those have been paid back, so I just don't know. I mean, is it because we don't know it, you know, January 1, are they going to be done? I mean, that's, that's my question or curiosity. Is there any assurance, any legal assurance I guess too or?
There is no time limit expressed anywhere in this agreement.
Okay.
Because how can you put a time limit? Nobody knows. And we have done forgivable loans and I can give you one, but I don't want to give it right here at the moment, was twice this. So this is reasonable and this loan here is a lot more important than the loan we did down south.
I agree with you.
And we don't have any choices. This thing's got to get done, period.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
I 100% agree with you there Dennis on that status, but just out of curiosity from the...
We hope we do.
Yeah.
To damages we're going to recover and take us back.
Yeah.
Well, I would certainly expect that our awarded damages would exceed $400,000.
Absolutely.
Amen. Exactly, so...
Five million plus in my book.
Yep. And Baker Group is on a month-to-month contract currently and has been since September.
And I guess, I mean, this is not for this item, but you know, obviously as the authority, you know, if you get done with the project, obviously we kind of expect the contract to change a little bit. They shouldn't need the same amount to do, you know, the follow-up. I, you know, I expect you to honestly need them for 12 months if you're asking me, you know, to be perfectly...
Baker Group or a project?
Yes.
12 months post-project?
I just think about the, you know, Simcoe Building and how we were in it for six or seven months before you finalized the project. There's a lot of things that still go on, just because you're in and using a building, that contract's not done. So just to be fully upfront with...
So did that contract for Simcoe go down after the completion of the project or was it the same for...
It was drastically different after the project was completed because you don't have somebody on-site all day, every day, obviously, you know, it's more the admin of the small items, so...
And see, I think, I think that makes sense. I think the problem we have here is that while their workload as far as the physical building will go down after completion, they're going to be part of the litigation team and so I don't know that the workload will really change at all. It will change in what they're doing, but as far as total workload, I don't know that it's going to change much. I mean, that's my thought.
Yeah, I still think...
Can I ask you a question, Mark? If I'm not jumping in over you, Keith?
Well, I was just going to say real quick that I think, you know, involvement in litigation is different from project management on-site, you know. On-site, you're there 24/7 or, you know, while you're, you're at work and involvement in litigation is you need to be available on the phone when needed, so. But yeah, go ahead there Jeremy.
I appreciate it. So I, I'm agreeing in terms of the necessity, you know, obviously this would take them through another month past when it's anticipated to be open right now, but I wonder in terms of going to an hourly rate, I mean, this contains four months of funding at a full-time rate as if we're in in-construction period and I just wonder at what point do we go to the kind of accountability where we know who it is, the individuals that are being paid, the hours that they're putting in, because obviously this isn't the only project, for example Shane Olbrecht has been or will be working on. So at what point is it that $34,000 a month, do we transition from there? And I want to pay them for exactly what they're doing, but I also think it makes sense, for example, if they're being paid in October, that we know, you know, have they put in 160 hours and I just think that's a very modest and minimal requirement that we, we do with, I think, every other entity and so I just wonder, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that we have no problem asking them to document the time spent because I think that's going to help justify that we're mitigating damages with what they're paying or what we're paying them, but I think it's important to note that if we had no contract with Baker Group today and wanted to hire them, we would not hire them for $34,000. It'd probably be close to double that. So we are already getting a very good deal. I've got no problem asking for receipts of time that they've spent. I think you will be shocked at the bang that we've been getting for the buck as far as hours that they've worked and for what we're paying them versus what their market rate is today and I don't think Shane has any problem giving us the documentation, so I, I'm, I'm fine with all that. My concern is going to an hourly rate, I think that we'll probably end up paying more, given from what I've seen just in nine months that I've been on the project, I think that Shane's been and the Baker Group's been underpaid for the work that they've done and so if we go to hourly, I think be prepared to pay up.
Yeah, that makes me nervous because I was calculating $420 an hour, which is above what we've historically paid some attorney fees, but I, I understand I may be in the minority on this one, but I just, I think to me, four months of project management on the in-construction rate, I'm not going to be supportive tonight, but I appreciate everybody else's position.
Dennis?
I'm going to add one more thing. Once we give the money to the authority, it is authority's responsibility to spend that money within the parameters. We cannot tell them we have to have an hourly, we have to have a contract. That is solely their decision and that is basically by law. Once they get the money, the authority is discharged with the duties of spending that money. Yes, we can suggest anything, but we can't tell them. I want to make that clear.
So I do think...
Can I respond to that, Matthew?
Sure.
So the lease actually calls for the Board of Supervisors to not only approve a budget, but to approve for any changes in a budget. And so that's right in the language of the lease. And so you're right, once we give the money without any parameters, that's true, but that's not the way the lease is written. The lease actually calls for the Board of Supervisors to approve the budget and approve any changes in the budget. So if it's, but you're right, if, if it's just everybody approves as is tonight, then they'll be able to do with it as they, as they choose.
I do think it would be nice to maybe see if Baker could give some kind of documentation of time spent over the last, I mean, I don't want to like add another job for them, but you know, to receive it into the record and, and the reason I suggest that is because I've gotten phone calls from other people that are in the same line of work and they say that we're getting taken here, but I have no way of knowing that from our standpoint and obviously this project is bigger than almost any other project in the state right now, so just to have it for receiving into the record and the public.
And I got no problem with that.
I, obviously first priority to me is get the job done, you know?
Yep.
So I don't want to take time away from getting the job done, but yeah.
That's been kind of the problem the entire time is we all say the priority is getting the job done and that means certain other things don't get documented. Doyle Turner, did you have any input?
Doyle Turner, 2738 200th Street, Mobile. I want to, you guys are doing a really good job. Everybody's bringing up really good comments. The thing that I would ask is about consistency, when we get into a courtroom standing, they're going to look at, did you treat other people's money like you treated your own? And, and I'm, this wasn't as high on my radar a little over a year ago in April when we, we passed the first due date to be done. My recollection is that we went month-to-month at that point in time and I guess from my standpoint, at this point in time, we're all assuming that the end of July, this project will be done. So we're kind of in the same boat on July 29th as we were in April of last year thinking, okay, we're coming to the end and if we were going month-to-month then, then I do think you would have, if, if we don't do the same thing with the insurance company or whoever pays these damages, we don't treat their money the same as ours, then it's hard to make the case that we are mitigating damages. So that's, that's the only point I want to make is that we need to be consistent in how we treat other people's money and our own.
Yeah, and I think at the first meeting that I was on the LEC Authority, we had a discussion about whether the Baker Group would have a contract extension for, I believe, six months or if we would go month-to-month and at the time, I argued that it needed to be month-to-month because if the project ended in December, we needed to be able to break away to mitigate our damages or whatever we needed to do to show that we're not gouging these, these parties. And so we're still planning on keeping them month-to-month, but I do think that once the project's over, there is another change because now they are doing legal services and I think that they need to provide and back up their timesheets and what they're doing to help that we can prove and say, hey, that's, this is why we're paying them. We've got the documentation of why we needed them on our side to help mitigate this case. I, yeah, I, that's where my head's at, which is a lot of, I think, what you're saying, Doyle.
Well, and, and that's why, I mean, can we, can we get a month-to-month agreement with, with them saying that they, they will see us through litigation?
Yeah, it will, they're month-to-month now and it will continue month-to-month after the completion of the project.
I don't understand, month-to-month through completion? What do you mean?
Well, you, if, if, if the litigation, let's say we get together with the insurance companies and this thing rolls and then at the end of August, everything's done, then you wouldn't be paying them for the next months.
Correct.
You know, so this contract is actually a month-to-month contract where if it truly finishes, you don't pay for the full period of time.
Correct and we, and they bill, they bill the last week of the month too, so we don't pay them till the last week.
Okay.
And actually, I believe that in the contract, in the, in the month-to-month contract, that even Baker Group has the, the right to walk away.
Okay.
So we could fire them or they could even leave.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. That clears it up. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else on this item?
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Nelson. Hearing no other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay?
Nay.
Mr. Auditor, quick question. I received a text from Mr. Bittenger who intended to call in, but he's on a canoe in northern Wisconsin and he's texting, he's trying to text his vote. I can show this to you, but he says, "My votes are yes for items 7A and B and 8A and Okay. Is there any objection to declaring those accepted?
I, I don't have an objection to it, but I think, you know, when I was like out in the Black Hills and I had no signal, I just, it's okay to not be 100% present, you know? It's okay to have a family vacation and voters will forgive that, you know? So if you can't make votes or if you can't make meetings sometimes, that's okay. So just, that's my opinion for the rest of you guys, so.
Okay, we'll accept it. And so the motion carries four to one, Taylor opposed, and also carries five to zero for items 7A and 7B. And now on item eight B, which is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2080 agreement between Woodbury County and the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority. I'll move that.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay?
Nay.
Passes four to one, Taylor opposed. Item nine is reports on committee meetings. I think we can include some discussion of the emergency as well here since we've...
Sure. Well, I had, I had a conservation board deal, but I think I'll just wait for next week and I can kind of give an update on some of like the emergency services and stuff like that that's going out on the, going on the eastern side of the county, so if people don't, aren't aware, we have eight bridges in the county across the Little Sioux River and currently all eight of them are closed. So the towns of Correctionville, Cushing and Danbury are cut off from western Woodbury County. Thankfully, last night before the last bridge closed, we were able to get one of our EMS paramedics and EMTs into Danbury and they are going to be posted up there. Danbury has probably the, the best ambulance of those three communities, so we're, we're housing two of our people there and they'll be there until the bridge gets back or a bridge opens that we can go back and forth to assist any of those towns. They're going to work with the hospital in Ida Grove because obviously we cannot get to Sioux City, but because of that, we are also still running a shift on the rest of the county. So we still have a full-time paramedic and EMT running in the rest of the county, so that there's going to be, you know, a little extra expense there as far as the personnel because we're going to be running two shifts or basically, you know, two shifts at the same time for the duration, you know, hopefully if we can get a bridge open back up, we can pull one of those away, but I think that that was a very, a very necessary thing for the circumstances. Yesterday Chairman Ung issued the disaster declaration for Woodbury County. The timing on that was impeccable because that allowed our secondary roads to go out in some of these communities and help with some flood mitigation and almost immediately we had, the guys were busy in Correctionville with signage and then we had guys really busy in Anthem and Odo helped building up the levee, which both of those towns have stayed dry. Odo, they're watching that one a little closer than Anthem, but I think they're going to be okay, but I've had a lot of comments from volunteers that were busting their butts and we're very thankful to have our, our guys out there alongside with big equipment moving sand, moving dirt. I, I didn't make it into Anthem late last night, but they said that the amount of dirt that they were hauling in and sand was just on, what they accomplished in the evening was unbelievable, so hats off to you and then all the guys at Secondary Roads that were busting their butts. So emergency management has done, I think, a great job.
Yes.
We were just down there this afternoon. I've been in pretty much constant contact with Correctionville, Anthem and Odo. I was in Correctionville yesterday afternoon when they were deciding what they were going to do as far as their evacuation and their planning and emergency management's been great. Mikey, all the staff, they've been, they've had the information, they've been available, they've been very helpful. I think, you know, we haven't really had any casualties. I think Correctionville's going to take the brunt of it and obviously, you know, Riverside over here, but...
Haven't, period, not haven't really.
Yeah, but...
Definitely haven't had casualties.
Yes, yes, so we're, they've done a nice job, so very thankful. I think people are like, well, what do we necessarily need those folks for when you have stuff like this? You know, a prime example, Saturday afternoon, I was in Correctionville filling sandbags and at that time, we had info of what the crest was going to be, which was just barely above flood stage and they were wanting to sandbag the, the lift station in Correctionville. So we said, okay, it's going to be about a foot over, so we need about a foot and a half of sandbags around the lift station. Well, then at 3:30, we got a report that it jumped to 23 feet, which was like five and a half feet over flood stage. So then immediately we could say, okay, well now we need more, more sandbags and so that's the purpose that they serve is to now, unfortunately, the water ended up at 31 feet and all that work we did was for naught, but that, that's what they're for and I've, so all of them have been very appreciative of them. I have been working, I talked with Chairman Ung about this, so the water's starting to recede a little bit. We don't know how long it's going to take, but eventually, especially in Correctionville, they're going to need some sort of trash service for when they start to clean out these buildings. I talked with the site manager at the landfill and we've identified a place in Correctionville where they can do a satellite where they can drop off roll-offs and people can fill it there. We're thinking for the people in Anthem, since they're only five, six miles from the landfill, that they can, they can drive their own debris. There's not going to be much in Anthem, we don't think anyway, but it'll be, Correctionville will be tough, especially if, most likely Highway 31 will stay closed for a while, but if 20 gets open, then, then they've got a long detour to get to the landfill from Correctionville. So they, they were going to talk with Mayor Ken about logistics and make sure they had a wheel loader to lift it, but we've got the, the ball rolling on that, so that's great. And the last thing I will add is that there are lots of drives going on to help people at Riverside, Correctionville, whatever, with flood mitigation or the people up north and so be sure to check into that. I know the city of Lawton has kind of run their own for... I know the city of Lawton has kind of run their own for the city of Correctionville, so there's, there's just lots of stuff locally. So I encourage people to donate, volunteer, you know, get involved, but please, 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 do not drive around barriers, and do not drive into water. So, we had to do a rescue Sunday night north of Correctionville, that was just, it had no business doing that. So, let's just stay out everybody's way, and, and please monitor the, the traffic and road reports, because this stuff is changing all the time.
Yesterday, I went to watch the operation at the Emergency Operations Center for about six hours, and then today, maybe three and a half. And very impressed with our coordinator, Mike Montino, that we've hired, and that is overseen by the mayors. It's been excellent, I've received excellent feedback on his initiative, and even just witnessing, you know, showing up before he was able to get there. He was out on some personal days, and had to, like a lot of people, cut that short, and come in, and it really shows the leadership there.
And I'd like to add to that, Matthew, is that time and time again, I would see Matthew, or Mikey randomly at city council meetings, just getting to know people, or at fire department meetings, and so, they all know him. So, it couldn't have been any better for the situation we're in, that these people had relationships with, they knew him. He's, yeah, he's done a good job.
Yes. And so the EOC is, has been staffed for, you know, 24-hour coverage last few days, of course, and that'll continue for probably at least three more days, I would say, until they stagger those back. We got people on for 12-hour shifts, representing the different offices and departments, although some of them have been staying for much longer, needless to say. We obviously have Correctionville on our mind with the flooding there. Correctionville provided some information that they wanted read into a press release or record, I'm not sure it really got into much of a press release earlier today, so I'll just relay the information they sent a couple hours ago. They're currently working with city engineers, emergency services, and multiple other agencies to secure their infrastructure. They're asking for no volunteers in the city, that's very important with the way the, the roads are covered, and the fact that there are, are checkpoints, and only people that live there will be allowed to enter, and, and no one after the curfew hours, if, if it is extended for tonight, which I believe it is, I've heard. They're asking residents to conserve water consumption, as their sewer lift plant is still underwater. Two-thirds of the city does have power, the remaining third possesses an extreme risk due to the floodwaters. Mid-American is in town working with Correctionville to find a solution, but there's no estimate of when Correctionville will be fully restored. Shelter food and air conditioning can be found at the emergency shelter at the River Valley High School South Gym. Also, earlier today, US Senator Ernst was present at the EOC, and was a part of a press conference of several entities. I believe a press conference will be held at the EOC at 1:00 PM for the next few days at least. We gave an update to the senator, and no commitments of funds were given, but at this time, that's normal. We're, we're getting all the paperwork in line, and, and we're all set up for federal aid. It's simply a ti, it's simply a matter of waiting for that to play out. And part of that process is related to the community's documentation, and our own staff's documentation of damages, whether that's photographing something that Secondary Roads fixes beforehand, or citizens taking pictures of water levels in their basements that have receded. And with that, Karen, could you please pull up the county homepage real quick? If it's... Okay, well, anyone that goes to woodburycountyiowa.gov, will see that there's a, an alert at the top that I just put up there today, at the advice of Mike Montino, which directs people to the portal that has been set up by the state to catalog your address, upload pictures of damages, this is not an insurance claim, but it does help us to do two things, track damages locally, and also track it for state and federal aid. And if there are extra requirements for those additional levels of aid, to get in contact quickly with those people, and make sure they get the documentation in. So, before cleanup is done, I'd ask everyone to keep that in their minds, as they're moving back in in an orderly fashion, however that is to be determined, to document damages. That's very important. There's obviously been a lot going on with that, but a lot of it's been communicated out, a lot of rumors have been dispelled with the press conference today, and I expect the information to be, you know, forthcoming every, every few hours, as it has been. So, what else can we say about it? Mr. Radick?
So, I just wanna say that, you know, I haven't heard any negative comments about any of the participation of emergency management, Secondary Roads, or the Sheriff's Department. I, you know, I think you guys kinda got missed in there. Everybody that has reached out on Woodbury County issues has been very appreciative. And I would also reiterate that there's been quite a few very helpful people out there, like willing to sacrifice their time and actually help out, that's very much appreciated. At the same time, there are a lot of people that wanna take pictures and just look, and that does just kinda get in the way, blocks traffic, creates unnecessary traffic jams. There's people providing drone footage, the news is providing footage, please just be comfortable with somebody else's picture. And, again, like, I can't tell you how much I appreciated getting some help on my own, you know, when I needed some, so, just random people with their side-by-side giving me a ride. I wouldn't have made it back in time had they not done that, people being willing to take my boat while I couldn't drive it, you know, a couple hours around about way. I mean, those little things are really, really appreciated. And there's just a lot of great people willing to help out, and I appreciate that, and I just want, you know, that to be said.
And, and to, to compliment that, the Sheriff's Office Facebook page, Woodbury County Sheriff's Office is uploading several, every several hours, footage, brief one-minute footage bits of drones, and what they're seeing in Smithland, Odo, Correctionville, Anthem. And I'd encourage anyone to go look at those, if they wanna see what's going on over there, because there's some areas you obviously can't get to, and really shouldn't get to at this time. But the good news is, the rivers have crested, and in Correctionville, I believe it's gone down about 12 inches since the morning, and in Smithland, four to five is what we were told at the EOC. And so, we have a few days between some more rain, and it should be enough.
Well, it's kinda like, you know the speed of the river, and you know where it flooded first, and now where the floods are receding first. So you can calculate when the water's gonna be out of there, and you can kinda, you know, clean up and actually get, get to work on it, because you gotta be quick once it recedes. You know, a lot of those places are only gonna have three days to get the sheet rock out before it's really too moldy, and, so yeah, if we have something to line up, some kinda dumpsters or something over there for Correctionville, I think that would be, I, I honestly think it'll be hard to keep them from being completely filled right away. So, again, I don't know if that's something where we could even throw our side dumps from Secondary Roads out there. I know, you know, I don't wanna volunteer stuff on, when Mark's not here, but something that we could think about, I guess, 'cause we, we've got a few days, so.
Well, we, Mark's department, Mark Nair's department, has been devoting many man-hours, which we will notice during the budget amendment. And that's just one of those things that county property tax dollars need to fund in a time like this. And we do have an emergency fund through the emergency coordinators' office, that's set up by code, of course, and so we are dipping into that as well. But also, in the rush to return to the homes, we, we do need to remind everyone that even if water is off the roads, does not mean that you can go around barricades, or assume that they're no longer valid, because they will be taken down once engineering has surveyed and confirmed it's safe. Especially with pavement out in the rural areas, you don't know if there's damage based on water rushing over it for several days, and submerging it and getting under it, could be extremely dangerous. So please keep that in mind.
And I don't wanna take the, have this taken out of context, like we've got our hand out, ready for Big Brother to help, but I do think it would be wise to really document Mark's expenses, or any other county staff expenses, whether they're from the Sheriff's Department, or, I mean, emergency management, this is what they're hired for, so.
Yes, sure.
But other departments, and, you know, we could look to the state or federal government, I know the state has quite a big reserve level right now. Sometimes those one-time emergency expenses are a good use for those kinds of funds, because they're never, you know, you don't ever anticipate spending money like that ever again, so. I would also encourage diligence in bookkeeping on those expenses.
And I think the big thing right now is people wanna know when a bridge is gonna be open, you know, and, just like you said, we have to, you know, just because the water's off, our guys are gonna have, or our guys, the DOT, whichever road it is, they're gonna have to go out and look at these things. And they think that there's already road that's been, that the asphalt has been pushed out on 31 between Anthem and Correctionville, so if that's the case, we'll see that when the water goes down, but then it may not open till we can patch that. But I did get a text that the bridge at Washita, it's on C-66, is open over the Little Sioux, which is good, we at least have a bridge. I don't know that you can get north or south on 31, if you get to the other side, but at least that bridge is open. I know it's not in the county, but I, I, I think there's a chance that Odo, the Odo Bridge could be open tomorrow, which that's right in the middle, that would help, that'd help a lot, you know? But I think, it's just, we don't know. We don't know what the water's gonna do, so it's wait and see, so.
Two more things on this. The Little Anthem Courthouse has been closed since Monday, and Treasurer Bertrand, is there a, have you made a determination about tomorrow that you'd like to share?
Good evening, Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. It's kind of a day-by-day thing, I have been asking a couple of questions. At this point, if nobody can get across the Little Sioux into Anthem, and the only way is to go all the way around, they're just, it's just as easy to come up to Sioux City than trying to open the Anthem office, and trying to get somebody in there, and trying to figure out how we're gonna get that, that office served. I do know that, I do have a tax deputy who lives in Anthem, she's on vacation this week, not spending it the way she thought she was going to, but she was able to get back into Anthem this afternoon, but they do not have internet, so without internet, we wouldn't be able to open the office anyway. I'm inclined to keep it closed for one more day, to at least confirm and maybe send out some staff, if it's myself or, or my deputies go out tomorrow, 'cause we'll be able to get into Anthem and just take a look at it. I do know that there hasn't been any water damage there, which is good. But, again, opening the office, if we can't get staff, or we can't have services, because we don't have telephone lines, or we don't have internet, isn't gonna help us. And I combine that with access from that side of the county, I mean, everybody, that office is designed to actually serve our eastern border, and if they, if those residents can't get in, everybody else on the other side, they, they do have our access. I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal coming into the end of June, we can address any other emergency issues, or any other concerns that citizens may have on an individual basis.
Okay.
So is that clear on that?
Yeah.
We're gonna be closing on, we're closing the office tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, I discussed with Mr. Priestley, our county zoning coordinator, a floodplain development permit fee waiver, which we had done in the past. Mr. Priestley, would you mind summarizing the email I see you sent me just a few minutes ago?
Yeah, following the event in Hornick, and after the board declared the emergency, one of the requirements, when we're in these flood events, or after the flood event, is of course, keeping records, evaluating the damage, and any area that is inundated in the floodplain, the actual floodplain footprint, that has been subjected to the flood damage under our involvement with the ordinance, as well as involvement in the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to keep that information documented. And we know the major burden that our property owners in the unincorporated areas, as well as our cities, are experiencing. But we have to do floodplain development permits, when they take the sheet rock off, they make the adjustments and change, all that has to be documented, and also be associated with a floodplain development permit. And so, we did this during Hornick, was basically waive the fees, and at least keep the communication chain going with the property owners. So this waives it for the unincorporated areas only, and we need to be very clear with that, 'cause the, the local cities themselves administer their floodplain requirements, so they might wanna individually look at that as councils as well. But it's the expectation through FEMA, through the DNR, that we keep this information documented, and the property owners work with us. And I don't have a total, or an understanding yet, on how many unincorporated houses, or structures, or sheds that are in the way of the flood event, but this is very specific to the floodplain itself, and the structures within, and so these property owners will have to interact with us, and we're gonna try our best to get that information out as well. And I think if the board would consider a resolution next week on that, that would help amplify that these fees are waived for the public, and to engage with the county on this issue.
Thanks. Well, the board doesn't need to deliberate on that, I'm just letting everyone know that further information, I've requested this to be on next week's agenda, for the resolution to waive the county fees associated with this.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports on committee meetings? Item 10, are there any citizen concerns?
Doyle Turner, 2738 200 Street, Mobile. I wanna give another attaboy to emergency services and the Sheriff's Department. It's, it's kinda sadly ironic, but they were being proactive and had classes for the public for emergency training, and one of them, I believe, was actually for tonight, and of course, they're being postponed now, but we appreciate the fact that, you know, these guys, like, like Keith, like Keith said, you know, they're hired to take care of this, they take it serious, and they really do work with the public to mitigate the damage and these types of things. One other thing that I wanna bring up is, the IUB went ahead and gave a permit to Summit Carbon Solutions for the CO2 pipeline. I, I guess what they're trying to tell us is that private property rights do not matter when it comes to a corporation's ability to get federal welfare, welfare dollars. The good part about it is that they did make it contingent on North Dakota and South Dakota, both getting permits, so that at least we aren't taking people's land for a pipeline to nowhere. But this is really a sad day. Quite a few, Bremer County was the first to do a resolution, I think I shared that with you earlier. Quite a few other counties have actually passed that resolution, or a version of it. And I think there are counties that are considering doing more of an ordinance along the same lines, telling the IUB that we don't believe that they have the legitimate right to find that, a CO2 pipeline that is only for welfare dollars, to be convenient and necessary, and a legitimate reason to use eminent domain. And I would appreciate it if you guys would consider looking at doing something comparable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that news made a bad day even worse. So, any other citizen concerns? Item 11, any board concerns?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just also sending thoughts and prayers to those in our community, and echoing what many of you have said. I'm appreciative of your leadership in each way, between the emergency declaration and the updates from the rural area, as well as our elected officials and employees. And also, I just wanted to commend our, our governor and the National Guard. Many have answered the call to state active duty, and so while we know the deployments guard members have made in the last 23 years since 9/11 overseas, when there's a deration, or tornado, a pandemic, or in this case, flooding, I'm appreciative, many drop everything and come on state active duty, and so I'm appreciative of them, as well as our first responders. And so, just wanted to, to make that known.
Any other board concerns?